I call the August 8, 2018 City of Fredericksburg Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). First item of business is approval of minutes of our July 11 regular meeting.
As you all see, Mr. Pates is not here tonight. I had a conversation with him earlier today where he posed the same question that I think he emailed about regarding the degree of detail provided in this last version of minutes. He asked that we table, consider tabling these and have a discussion in our next meeting about the appropriate level of detail provided in our minutes going forward. I don't, I was not at the meeting, so I'm not going to participate in the discussion, but wanted to see what everyone's thoughts were on that.
Well, my question is, do these tapes of these meetings, do they remain available for years and years and years? I mean...
Yes.
Well, then, why would we need to? I'm not, I'm not big on redundancy, so if somebody wants to go back to the archives and watch the original tape...
Would we get the city attorney for that conversation to talk about the open records law and meeting minutes requirements? I would feel more comfortable having that discussion with an authority on the subject.
I certainly think we can ask.
I'll check with him.
Yeah. I understand your point. I think the, the tapes are there forever, but most people, when they are kind of researching something, go through the record. And I, I don't think Mr. Pates was necessarily suggesting a verbatim kind of type up of what exactly was said by everyone, but the feeling was that a more, a little bit more detail in particular about, well, I don't want to speak for, for Mr. Pates, but I want him to be able to have that discussion in this, in this forum, perhaps with the county attorney and, and share his position on that. I do think he has some valid points about that, but I don't think it's a big deal to delay.
It's my intent that when it comes down to the point at which a motion is made and there's discussion about the motion and, and any conditions made, that, that would be fairly robust in terms of describing what you did. In this particular item at the last go around, this is basically what everybody said. It was not a lengthy, detailed, specific discussion when it came down to, to the minutes. I think, I'm sorry, to the motion. When it, when, when we're talking about the members of the public who come and, and give their comments, while their comments are valuable and, and need to be moralized and certainly would be in the tapes and, and in the, in the transcript, that, that's not the critical issue when it comes from a legal standpoint. It would be the commission's observations and motions and, and conditions. And so that's, that's what we would focus on, but I'm happy to involve the city attorney in the discussion.
Well, just for clarification, the only reason why I said city attorney is because she's the, the, oh, shucks, what's that called? When, the FOIA, she's like the, the FOIA person for the city. And on the other boards that I'm on, where we've had questions about minutes and what needs to be in the minutes, we've deferred to, to our FOIA person. I don't know if you all have a different appointee internal, then we could have that person come, but that would just rather, I think that's more my concern, because I don't think you can cite a video as your permanent record source for a meeting.
Electronically, it is, it is the record. I mean, and if, 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 if a court process dictates a written verbatim transcript, if you will, that can be obtained from, from the recording.
Yeah, that's true. And I realize I was a federal ally and not a state, but I mean, sometimes they would take transcripts of things that we did on a tape and then turn those into the records that they use for the FOIA response, so yes.
Yeah, but it still has to be documented somewhere, even if that's our policy, which I don't know that that is, and if it is, I'd like to see it in writing, just so I'm aware.
Well, I think delaying the adoption of these until next month isn't really going to hurt anything, and I think it's a discussion we ought to have, whether we all decide that this threshold or this threshold can be something we can work on and develop a policy in the future, but I do think it's, it's worthy of a discussion at the next meeting if you all are willing.
So is there a recommendation or a motion? I mean, what do we do here?
Well, I'm not going to make one, I wasn't here last meeting, so I'm not going to...
No, a motion isn't necessary. You simply move on to the next item.
Everyone okay with that? Okay. All right, Declaration of Conflict of Interest, if there's any member of the commission or member of staff that has a conflict of interest with any of the items being discussed tonight at public hearing, now is the time to explain those or, or to state those and, or accuse yourself. Hearing none. General public comment. Now, Mr. Johnson, has this moved? Has this always been right here at the, right after? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. New business, pre-plat. It's been a, a long day, I'm sorry. Valley Run Preliminary Subdivision Plat, Valley Run LLC proposes to develop approximately 7.6 acres in a 64 single family attached lots, common areas, related infrastructure along the west side of Jefferson Davis Highway, south of Dunning Mills Drive. Ms. Sherman, Mrs. Sherman, sorry.
Yes, thank you. My presentation tonight provides an overview of the Valley Run Preliminary Subdivision Plat, the two associated exception requests, and staff's recommendation on each. The planning commission's role is to review the application and take action on the draft resolution to provide its recommendation to city council. The commission is encouraged to make its recommendation tonight as the application has been scheduled for an August 28 city council public hearing in order to meet the Code of Virginia's mandate for action within 60 days of the submission of the plat. The 7.6 acre site is located in a generally commercial area on the west side of Route 1. It is zoned commercial highway, which allows for townhouse uses by right. The proposed neighborhood will support the existing commercial uses and complement the Devonshire and Confederate Ridge neighborhoods located on the east side of Route 1. Valley Run comprises 64 townhouse lots. Direct access from Route 1 and Dunning Mills Road will be provided by the two private streets, Valley Run Drive and Emerson Lane. The streets establish an internal block pattern and diversify traffic options along Route 1, thereby reducing vehicle trips at the intersection of Route 1, Dunning Mills Road, and Confederate Boulevard. The private streets will be constructed with curb and gutter, on-street parking, streetlights, and street trees. A network of alleys will provide primary access to lots 13 through 41, secondary access for lots 1 through 12 and 42 through 64, parking bays, and future access to adjacent properties. Sidewalk will be extended along the frontages of Route 1 and Dunning Mills Road. 2.39 acres of land will be dedicated to the homeowners association for an open space set aside. The open space is designated for recreational uses, gathering areas, as well as the preservation of natural areas and installation of buffers. It's important to note that this layout has evolved since the Valley Run LLC first brought it to, to staff for review. It started out a lot more conventional, with garages, fronting on streets, breaking up sidewalks, and limited relationships between the individual residential lots. Thankfully, the developer worked with staff to achieve something much more in line with the form-based code that's currently under development for the CH zoning districts in small area 3. Elements like the street grid, the use of alleys, and the creation of courtyards and greens, again, is much more in line with that future form-based code. There are two exceptions, however, that the applicant is, is requesting as part of this review. The first exception request relates to, relates to the lot frontage requirement for lots 13 through 41. Section 72-51.3A requires each lot in the CH zoning district to front on a public street, a private street, or a driveway, meeting certain standards outlined in the code. Basically, a driveway that wouldn't have perpendicular parking on it. As proposed, lots 31, excuse me, 13 through 41 would front on common areas or adjacent residential lots. Basically, the front doors would face each other. Those residential lots that face each other would have future common area easements along the common sidewalk in front of them. Those units would also have garages that access from the adjacent 24-foot wide alleyways. This design permits the townhouses, again, to face one another over the common areas for use by the neighborhood. It creates a community gathering place and a unique neighborhood character, which are positive aspects of the proposed project. The design further several goals in the comprehensive plan for residential neighborhoods and housing, including creating a neighborhood character, having good neighborhood, neighborhood quality, and creating distinct and attractive neighborhoods. The second exception request relates to reducing the minimum width of alleys that provide secondary access to lots 1 through 8 and 42 through 62. Section 72-52.3D requires alleys to have a minimum width of 24 feet unless the Virginia statewide fire prevention code requires wider, wider access. Valley Run proposes to construct alleys and streets at least 24 feet in width where they serve as primary access to the lots, and to provide sufficient access for public and private vehicles and public safety and firefighting equipment. As recently approved with the Hampton's Phase 2 Preliminary Plat and the Highlander Subdivision General Development Plan, however, Valley Run also requests an exception of this code to allow for the reduction in alley width to 20 feet where the alley serves as a secondary access to the lots that are mentioned. The reduction in alley width is necessary to minimize overall pavement in the neighborhood and to provide for complete streets along Emerson Lane and Valley Run Drive. The 20-foot wide alley width exceeds the average 10-foot wide alley in the older areas of the city and conforms to the standard set with the modern Ottawa development. Staff recommends approval of the draft resolution that's in your package, which recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plat and the two associated exception requests to city council. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. You have questions?
Just curious, are these two or three-story townhouses? I couldn't see that on anything I looked at. Maybe I missed it, but...
They are three stories with the garage on the ground level.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherman?
Mr. Tull?
Excuse me. I was wondering, what is the difference between the Public Works granting the design waivers versus the, what do we call these? The exception request? Can you help me there?
Yes. The city code is laid out where, embedded within the development standards, certain sections of the code related to streets and, and public infrastructure, maybe water and sewer, but definitely streets. It allows the Public Works Director, just like VDOT would have in county maintained streets, it allows the city's Public Works Director to waive certain standards. The other standards related to lots and just other general development standards typically would be waived by the development administrator on administrative subdivisions, but goes to city council for major subdivisions like this one.
So if, if we were to approve this tonight, then we would actually be approving those exceptions?
Recommend...
It could have been done administratively, if it didn't come in front of us.
The, the two exceptions that I just reviewed have to be approved by city council in conjunction with the preliminary plat.
Well, they have to be.
The street design waivers, that will be handled formally by the Public Works Director with the site plan. I'm merely alerting you to those preliminary approvals issued by the Public Works Director.
On the drawing number four of eight, you have a typical lot layout, and there doesn't seem to be any dimensions on the back. How, what is that dimension where it says there's a deck there? That's the parking area, I assume?
It's above the garage?
It, it is. It's, it's a driveway, and 200-foot, square foot deck meets a U standard for townhouses. They're required to have a 200-square-foot yard, which is in the form of a deck.
But that's elevated, so the car can fit in the total driveway, or that's going to preclude them from parking in that portion?
It is. It's elevated on the second floor. We've seen this design with Cowan Crossings Residential and Governor's Row.
So what would be the dimension for the car to park in, then, from the townhouse back to the lot line?
The minimum depth of the, of the driveway is 18 feet.
Will be 18 feet, and that's where those two cars are going to park?
They actually have garage spaces inside, on the ground level.
Oh, okay.
There, so there, there could potentially be room for four cars.
Okay. Oh, okay. And, okay, and you mentioned there'd be parking on the, on-street parking. What, could you give me a, for instance, of where they'd be parking, like on Emerson Lane, or?
Yes, so there are 11 on-street parking spaces in front of lots 42 through 51, and there is roughly 20, or there are 22 on-street parking spaces on Valley Run Drive along the frontages of lots 1 through 12 and 52 through 64.
So, excuse me, but Emerson Lane is 22-foot wide, right?
The 22-foot wide indicates the travelway, and then there's an additional 7-foot wide on-street parking space.
Additional to 22 is a 7-foot?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd have 22-foot of clear?
Yes.
And as I understand it, these are all private, either roads or alleyways, which means the homeowners association would have to maintain those, correct?
Yes.
Does the city encourage that kind of thing? Would we rather have public roads versus private? Because it seems like that's a pretty heavy burden on the homeowner association. They're not familiar with doing those kinds of things. I realize that may be more expense to the city, too, but...
Well, I won't tell you the city's position on that, but I will tell you that the code allows for development on public streets, private streets built to public street standards, or driveways meeting certain standards. So the code allows for the development like this to be on private streets.
And then the homeowners are aware of that when they buy the, the units? They have to maintain this in the common area? It seems to me like that's going to be a pretty heavy homeowners association fee.
And that's something you're welcome to discuss with the, with the developer.
Is, is that set in our code, though, when we set up the homeowners' documents and review them?
So the city does not review homeowners' association documents?
Excuse me, I thought they did.
We don't. What we require is there to be a homeowners' association set up to receive the land that's shown on the future plat that will be dedicated to them, but it is up to the developer to set up whatever covenants that establish, that are established for the neighborhood.
Wow, okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. Can we go back to the, the alleyway picture that you had with the green, or red, I guess?
This one?
Yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
Okay, so the alleyways, that's, the garages in this section, those are in the back, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so it'd be, so the people coming and going, is that enough, is 20 feet enough distance for the width of both cars to pass at the same time down an alley?
Yes, a parking space, which allows for doors actually to open, is a minimum of eight and a half feet. So 16, 17 feet certainly allows for people to pass, and that's the same as people who live in Idowal. They have a 20-foot section that, and they regularly pass each other.
All right. Was that, at the time that they built Idowal, was that a waiver, or was that the standard?
I think it was, I'm not exactly clear. It was shown as part of their general development plan, which was reviewed with the rezoning.
Okay, and then the, the only sections that overlook each other are the, the ones that need the waiver, is that right? In terms of the, was it 21 to 41? I'm sorry.
This slide shows the sections of alley that would be allowed at 22, excuse me, 20 feet in width. This one, which is up at the top left of the overall plan, it, it allows for those lots to only have access on alleys. Those alleys would be 24 feet in width.
Okay. And is, well, I guess this other piece of land that they're, they're going to have as public ways, that's not big enough to put a road? Is that why they need the waiver for that? I guess. Like to...
Certain water meters.
I guess that's wetland, okay.
You just touched it. What did you do?
Oop.
You don't touch this. I'm sorry, would you mind asking your question again?
No, I think I figured out my question. Thank you, though. Okay, I, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. There any, was there any studies or thoughts on putting stoplight coming out of that? Is it increasing the traffic enough to justify such a thing, or, or even by the, the snowco?
The, the developer did submit voluntarily, they did submit a traffic review, impact review of, of that intersection with Dunning Mills Drive. They did it voluntarily in that it's, in this case, it would be an off-site impact. And what they found is that no traffic signal was warranted, that, that, that traffic can flow making right and left turns there. They did recognize that there already is somewhat of an issue leaving Confederate Boulevard, but, but the, but the analysis provided said that the, the impact of these lots would not require a traffic signal.
Would you happen to know, like, what, what's the thresholds? Like, what was coming out, what's coming out of there now? What's proposed to come out? And what would justify a, a light?
It would take me a few minutes to review the traffic study.
No problem.
But that is, in the traffic study, I'd be happy to get you that information.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Just one more, I'm sorry. And is there, by codex requirement, to have the, the opening on Jefferson Davis Highway, or could they have designed it for everybody to come through Dunning Mills Road?
They could have potentially had that one access point to Dunning Mills. I don't know what the impacts then would have been at the intersection of, of Route 1 and Dunning Mills. I can tell you from a staff perspective, both planning staff and the Public Works Department and the Fire Department, really, the more access points to a neighborhood, the better. If something were to happen on Dunning Mills Road, that, that blocked traffic there, well, this is, this is a secondary option, not only for this neighborhood, but for folks staying at Dunning Mills Inn or, or other uses along Dunning Mills Road. It, it also relieves some of the potential traffic that would have been at the intersection with Dunning Mills Road and Route 1. It allows, the, the intersection with Valley Run Drive allows for right-turn lanes, both into and out of the site, which, again, reduces traffic at the other intersection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sherman, there's a couple of, they're showing sidewalks along Jefferson Davis Highway that just sort of go to the edge of the, the perimeter of the property. Is, are there, you know, a comprehensive plan? Are there plans to extend those sidewalks? Are they parcel by parcel? I know you've got the school a little bit to the south. What is, what's the city's take on, is it just a policy that every time you come in, you're putting it along the, the main travel lane, went lane? Or is there a, as part of our trails plan, our sidewalk plan, some opportunity in the future to do some CIP projects to extend that sidewalk?
Well, the VCR trail does extend nearby to this property, and so ultimately, the goal would be to tie this neighbor into that larger trail infrastructure. I'm not aware of a specific trail, or I know that there's not a specific trail called out in the comprehensive plan now along Route 1, but in neighborhoods, we consider complete streets to include sidewalks on both sides. There is a small segment of sidewalk on Dunning Mills Road, and so this project would take that existing sidewalk and, and capture it through the neighborhood and then actually take it out onto Route 1. So it does provide the initial steps to connect it to the, to the VCR trail and to that larger city network, but, but they're doing what they can with their project.
Okay. On, on these, do we typically have an applicant presentation when we're doing, because earlier, I think one of you said it might be a question for the applicant. I don't know if there's a...
I think you can offer them an opportunity to add...
Okay, would the applicant like to speak about the project? Answer any questions that maybe weren't answered?
Good evening. My name is Dan Webb, and I am the owner, along with my brother, of the property, and we're also the engineers that prepared the plan. I don't have a presentation, but be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Who's mowing the grass between the buildings? Is the HOA going to do that, do you think?
You know, the way we set it up on our last project, Governor's Row, we had the HOA maintain all the grass, and that was a great selling point, and I think it's kept the community really looking nice.
Do, do those have, for that project, you've got HOA docs that cover that?
Yeah.
And have you had any pushback from residents as you've moved forward with?
No, no, we actually, we had an HOA meeting tonight at 6:30, just before this, and it's been one of the, the few communities that I've been involved with that we've never had a complaint. They've all been very happy, a great community. Chad was there, and, you know, they, it's, it's, it's all worked well. And I think that the, you know, the overall maintenance handled by the HOA, you know, the expense hasn't been great, and it's provided for a, really a good-looking community, versus having every individual homeowner mow their, their little strip.
During the presentation, there was a conversation about changes that were made, looking towards form-based code, working through the process that staff, I guess, requested. I don't know what your original design was, but what were, in your vision and that, was that more, what would you equate to the original design? Look, I mean, we didn't get a chance to see that. What I'm trying to get at is, form-based code that we've kind of been pushing, staff obviously has been asking for, it'd be good to kind of see where that direction from staff kind of led us and what that does to, you know, your project and, and, you know, the view of it.
Well, I would say our original design was very conventional in nature to a lot of other townhome communities. We did not have any alleys. All of the roads fronted and accessed off of one main access road. And essentially, what we've done is we've had, we've, you know, working with staff, we've added alleyways back behind all of the units and provided vehicular access to the rear versus to the front. I would say that's, that's the main. We, I mean, we, we've done a, a number of different layouts, working with staff to, to make sure we were meeting and accomplishing the goals, and sometimes it's a process.
So can I just ask a question again about parking?
Sure.
Given, I mean, the streets are, because you can't turn them over to the city, I mean, unlike, I'll just use Idowal. So when you talk about the trafficability, are indeed the streets wide enough for dual traffic when there's parked cars on it? Because I can tell you right now, that is an issue in, in Idowal, and the streets are wider than what you're putting in this, this project here.
Yeah, I mean, we're meeting the VDOT standard for, for the roadway widths. So, I mean, we have a 30, like on Valley Run Drive, we have 36-foot from face of curb to face of curb, which is more than adequate to, to handle on-street parking and then providing a two-way travel. You know, we're not providing any parking on the alleys. The, the reduction in the width was on the alleys in the rear, and there is no parking along those.
And that is parking on both sides?
Yes. Well, it's parking on both sides on Valley Run Drive. Emerson Lane, we're only providing parking on one side, but the travelway itself is the same size. You know, when we're doing a lot of subdivision design on, on smaller subdivisions for VDOT, they will allow us to go down to an 8, 18-foot travelway, which, you know, provides for two 9-foot lanes. You know, we're, we're not doing that. We're, we're providing two 12-foot travel lanes. You know, along Route 1, you'll find, you know, some of the older sections elsewhere. I mean, sometimes you can even get down to a 10-foot lane. You know, we try to provide a 12-foot when we have a lot of traffic, but all of these roads that we are proposing meet that standard.
If, if the waiver wasn't granted, what, what would be, have to shift, or what would have to change to your plan for the 4 feet?
For the 24?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to make it difficult along that Emerson Drive. We would have to do a reduction in the yard or provide some reduction in, in the travelway along Emerson Lane. Plus, it would push it a little bit closer to Dunning Mills, and we're trying to provide a buffer there. We have been working with the, the property owner, really, all, all of the property owners around, and, and taking some of their concerns into play.
Thank you.
Sure.
If I might add to that, I think the concern might be, there's a minimum lot size that has to be met, and so that's what's shown here for the most part. And so I think the concern from staff is that the first thing to go might be the on-street parking, which, which isn't required because they meet it in the garages, and that's certainly a benefit to have, we feel.
to have, we feel.
Any other questions?
I was just wondering, what are the price range of these townhouses going to be? Do you know?
I mean, it's tough to say, but I, I mean, they're, they're gonna be starting around the three-hundred range.
Three-hundred. So, affordable housing, this will not be?
It's tough to do affordable housing with all the improvements we're proposing, yeah.
I understand.
Do you, will there be any screening or anything between the gas station and the alleyways? I mean, will there be shrubbery, trees, will there be a wall, whatever? I mean, I don't see it on here anywhere. I just kind of wondered. I realize it's the back of people's houses, but-
Yeah, I mean, we will be providing some screening there. Um, there, there was not a, a screening required, so we did not show it on the plan, but, I mean, certainly, uh, you know, what we, what we did on our last project was we provided a vegetated buffer, but in addition to that, we, we provided a fence, and we felt like that provided for a lot nicer product.
Questions? Thank you. Any discussion? Just curious, we had any discussion? Who brought it back?
Hearing no discussion, I guess I'll go ahead and, and make a motion that we approve the preliminary subdivision plan with the, uh, recommendations of staff.
I think there's two parts to that. The, um, recommendation of, is that correct? We'd have approval of, recommended approval of the preliminary plat as well as the exception request?
If, if that is your position- Uh, if that is the position you're taking, you can make a recommendation to approve the draft resolution in your-
Yeah, we have that.
...package, which covers approval of all the plat and the two exceptions.
This is my motion.
I second it. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Are these working?
We don't have to go to the other person's this time, right?
Okay. Okay, um, please cast your vote.
They're not turned on.
Try it again.
Good, it just-
Gotta warm up?
Yeah, it's gotta warm up. Okay.
Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Mr. Slominski? Okay. Next item of business, general public comment. If anyone from the public would like to address the planning commission tonight, please come forward. Mr. Freeling? Nothing? Other business, planning commissioner comments, Housing Advisory Committee Affordable Housing Plan, Vice Chairman Gant.
So, the, uh- Thanks. So, the, um, the Housing Advisory Committee had its kickoff session. Uh, I, I think it went very well. The challenge we have, and we talked about this, is, I think twofold. The first is really describing the affordable housing aspect here within the city, uh, because there are a lot of facets to it. Um, and then, I think the second piece is, is actually, how do you go about attacking that? Um, and I do mean attacking it, because you just heard, uh, you know, three hundred thousand dollars for new townhomes coming in. Um, but there, there are a lot of things that we talked about that we want to hopefully influence as they go forward with the proposal for those feasible, you know, action plans. They had, uh, so, what the, uh, what the city's really done is, is we are the advisory committee working with the folks who are going to produce the RFP, and there are four aspects to it, and Mr. Craig and, and Mr. Johnson can, can correct me. And it's the identification of critical unmet housing needs, community and stakeholder outreach, outreach and engagement, policy inventory and analysis, uh, that's the primary deliverable, uh, actionable recommendations and feasibility analysis, another primary deliverable. Uh, I, I guess we had a gentleman here a couple sessions ago who actually outlined just how large the issue is becoming, not just here in the city, but across the counties that we buttress up against. And, uh, I think that, uh, the approach that the, the city has taken and what we, we are looking to provide to the council from this particular, um, uh, committee or working group, I, I think is gonna be beneficial, but it, it still is a, a matter of, I think, wh- what the will will be within the city to do certain things. Have I missed anything? I, I'll defer to those gentlemen.
You've done an excellent job. I would, I would amplify and say Mr. Gant and the committee have, have agreed, perhaps a little reluctantly, but did agree to serve as the selection committee for, for the consultant and, and to help, uh, provide direction and guidance as, as we go forward. It's our sense that this is, well, our sense, this is going to be discussed again, uh, the draft, uh, work scope will, at the council work session next Tuesday. Uh, I, I believe they'll be giving us, continue to give us green lights, and so we will be working with our purchasing office and, and the goal, based on her schedule and her, her body of work, to, to get out the RFP by the end of September. Not, not as quickly as we'd all hoped, but, but we're, we have to get in line with everybody else's projects, and so by the end of September, and so we would have that out and hopefully get someone selected by November and, uh, have them, uh, proceed forward at that point in time in order to give the options for the city to understand how to, how to deal with this very important issue.
Very curious about that. I think that is a challenge. You know, identifying the need obviously is important. The one that I'm most curious about is, you know, how is the city gonna define its affordable housing stock? Is it higher density, smaller use? Um, is it some type of subsidy or subsidized housing unit through, either through, you know, government, um, assistance or through, um, some type of, uh, federal program or, or incentive agreement with developers or whatever it may be, builders? Um, I'm eager to kind of hear the ideas and how that can then morph into a policy, because I think it's a tough, it's a tough one to, to navigate.
And in sharing our, I guess, our knowledge and experience in this first session, all those aspects came up. So, we, we understand, or we're beginning to understand, the largeness of what it is. We're gonna take a look at, which is why, um, I think that the, the, um, the working group here supporting this, the advisory committee, uh, is indeed important because those aspects need to get fed in. I mean, even from, you know, not just the aspects you mentioned, but you have elderly, and then you got, you know, lo- families, needy families. So, there, there's a number of facets here that, um, the city's gonna take a look at, and I think it's, it's a good deal.
We, we certainly would be looking at, uh, some sort of regulatory stipulation that, that at a minimum income level, uh, there'd be a, a minimal percentage of units set aside, it's affordable workforce housing. Um, but then the, the more complicated options involve setting up a trust fund, which would serve as, as a revolving loan fund for, for appropriately qualified projects. I think the city is not gonna be in, wanting to be in the role of any kind of management of, of units, but providing some degree of financing for them is, 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 is probably the path that we'll have to explore and determine. But the city's not going to be owning low-income housing units and managing that. That's, that, that, that's a burden that would just be an awful lot. So, I think we, it would be a public-private partnership that we'd be looking to try to create.
Any other questions, comments on that? Thank you, Mr. Gant. Planning Director comments. Mr. Johnson, is that to you?
There's several items that, just want to give you a little bit of an update. They're gonna be coming down the pike and, and be on the, on the future commission agendas. Uh, first one on your list there is some amendments to the comprehensive plan dealing with a certain recreational facility that's being contemplated. Uh, Bill Freeling has been at the, uh, is the lead hitter on, on that particular item, and I think he will share with us some of the thoughts of where that's going. That will not only be a land use decision, a special use issue coming before you all, in addition to a comp plan amendment, and that comp plan amendment will also be dealing with road network modifications in, in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development.
Before Mr. Freeling starts, I guess I do have a conflict of interest. As many of you know, there is a proposed recreational facility, a piece of property that is owned by my employer. Uh, so I will, uh, even though this is just a briefing, I'm gonna-
Don't obfuscate. Are we talking about baseball?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Gant, uh, take over. You can stay where you are if you want. I understand.
And I guess I need to ask you a question, Mr. Johnson, because I've already seen notice for September the fifth, and I would imagine that, you know, numerous folks will be attending. I plan to attend, but then when you, when you start to have planning commission numbers there, we've talked about this before when we were doing the small area plans, so, so we might need to-
Anyone, you, you can attend a public meeting and, and session, just don't sit as a group and talk about yourself and somebody make a motion. I mean, it's-
Okay.
It is, it is expected that, you know, people are going to show up at the same meeting at the same time, but, uh, that's, that's not an issue. Just don't take that as an opportunity to go in a corner and start making motions about-
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up because the notice did go out today.
Right.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'll provide, I'll, I'll be fairly brief in my comments, but of course, what Mr. Johnson's talking about is the multipurpose stadium in Celebrate Virginia South, uh, which would be the new home to the, uh, the Potomac Nationals, which relocated here from Woodbridge, and it would also be a, a venue that would be appropriate for an array, for an array of other sports and activities and events. And, um, so the, uh, cit- the status of it right now is the city council has, uh, approved a letter of intent with the team, uh, at its July tenth meeting. Uh, we're now in a one-hundred-and-twenty-day study period in which there's a, an array of things that need to get done, uh, including a comp plan amendment, special use permit, um, which will be your primary focus. Uh, but in, in addition, there needs to be definitive agreements, uh, executed between the team and the, uh, and the city. Um, they're going out and designing the, uh, designing the stadium, uh, designing the layout, uh, getting financing, talking to sponsors, uh, et cetera. So, there, there's a whole bunch of stuff that needs to get done in the next one-hundred-and-twenty days, but one of those is, again, the special use permit and the comp plan amendment. At the conclusion of that, it would come back before the, uh, the definitive agreement would come back before the city council, which would outline all the business terms between the team and the, and the city, uh, over the next thirty years. Um, so, I think it's an exciting opportunity, uh, for our community, and, um, I think that we can structure it in a way that, uh, does not cost, uh, taxpayers any, any money. Um, so, certainly happy to answer any questions, but we want, just wanted to give you that overview. They did submit the special use permit application last week. Uh, the, there will, the intent, I believe, is to bring it, um, before the planning commission for a public hearing on, um, on, uh, September twelfth. Uh, and the September fifth, uh, heat meeting that you referenced is a, uh, it's one of the things that, that says in the, uh, letter of intent that we need to have a, a community meeting, and that, that's more about the sort of financial details of the, of the, but also something about the, the layout and the transportation, et cetera. So, um, so that's the plan, and, again, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. O'Toole?
I was wondering, I realize they're gonna play baseball in the stadium, and that's the primary use of the stadium. How does the city fit in, mesh with that, uh, so they don't conflict-
Hit you, Mike, Mr. O'Toole.
So they don't conflict with, uh, their baseball's main intent?
Uh, we'll work out a, a shared use agreement with the team where the city can use it, uh, during designated times, the, um, primary, with, it's still to be determined, the, all the details, but the idea is that the city can use it for a hundred-and-eighty-three days a year, uh, which means that we can have parks and rec camps, um, high school games, UMW games, concerts. Um, but in, what we'll end up doing, more than likely, is just working together with the team to schedule, um, things that we want to have there, things that they want to have there, things that we both want to have there. Um, but it's, it's designed as a community amenity.
And just from what I read in the newspaper, the city's gonna put up like a million dollars a year for the availability of the facility?
Right. The, the payment would be one-point-oh-five million dollars for, for thirty years, and the, the financial breakdown of that is we anticipate about seven-hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue from the stadium, uh, including almost three-hundred thousand of that is real estate tax revenue, and then four-hundred to four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of meals tax, admissions tax, sales tax, personal property tax, B-pole tax, et cetera. Um, and then we anticipate that we can generate about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year on use of the stadium, which would include revenue from the Celebrate Virginia After Hours Concert Series. Um, and, uh, and then we're, uh, there would also be a contribution from the developer of Celebrate Virginia South toward that amount. So, we're confident that we can generate the one-point-oh-five million and then pay that to the team, and so there would be no effect on the, on the general fund budget. But there is a, the city is responsible for one-point-oh-five million regardless of the performance of the stadium, so it'll be incumbent on all of us to make sure that the stadium thrives.
So if they go bankrupt, we still have to pay the million?
Now, if they stop playing games there, then they would be in default of the, of the agreement, and we wouldn't pay.
So there's really basically no downside to the bankruptcy or the inability of the club to make money and would move out of town, from the city's perspective? We wouldn't be stuck with a bond that we'd have to pay over thirty years?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. They're financing it. It's privately financed, privately maintained. Yeah.
Because some people say, why don't we just pay for the use of the facility when we use it? Is that something that you've contemplated, instead of trying to put a million dollars per year into it?
Well, again, there's tax revenue, there's just the inherent value of having a team, there's the value of, um, that, to the community of having that as an asset. Uh, there's a lot of marketing value. We're gonna get a suite, we're gonna get, um, ads on the outfield wall, on the program, on a kiosk, on the video board, on this, on the team's website. We think there's a lot of opportunity to tell our message, uh, to share our message about our great restaurants and parks and et cetera, to people who, some of whom might be learning about it for the first time. Uh, but the fact is, it's very rare to privately finance a stadium. Uh, it's almost always done by a municipality, and so, one of the, one of the key things that the team needs to get it financed is a quote-unquote anchor tenant that's going to provide a, a bank with some comfort that the, there will generate sufficient revenue to cover the debt service. And that's what the city is in this deal, the anchor tenant.
Yeah. Tom's point is really good, but at the same time, they want revenue certainty, so that's why we just can't pay as we go, I'm sure, is what they're thinking, you know? Well, thank you. That-
Sure.
Anyone else?
Um, I'm probably not as in the loop as I should be on this, but two questions. One is, uh, capacity of the stadium proposed?
Yes, five thousand seats.
And then, uh, what, have any preliminary stuff on traffic impact?
Well, the, the anticipated attendance is, uh, about forty-one hundred paid and about thirty-five hundred people actually sitting in the stadium. Um, so if you figure about, um, one car per three people, then, um, you're looking at maybe eleven hundred cars. Uh, so, Celebrate Virginia South was designed for a much larger user than, than this. It was designed for major resorts and tourist amenities, six-lane roads. Um, so it's about the same size as the Celebrate Virginia After Hours concerts that are held now. They routinely get about that same number of people, and I've never heard anybody complain about traffic, so, uh, also the, the games will be at like seven, seven-thirty, so they'll be after the heart of the rush hour anyway. Um, so, maybe it adds a little bit of traffic, but-
Yeah, it's not Celebrate Virginia. I'm worried about it through three and ninety-five.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, uh, we'll be coming forward to, with you, to you all with a text amendment, uh, to address the issues of data centers, computer cloud data centers. I might talk a little about that.
Thank you. Uh, we've, actually, uh, Bill being here is good. We've been getting inquiries into our economic development department about, uh, data centers, and when we talk about data centers, these are, uh, generally, uh, larger, uh, buildings. Think about like a Best Buy. like a Best Buy. But instead of selling computers or anything, it's just a warehouse full of servers, and they handle web traffic or store other data. They're not processing data necessarily or anything like that. It really is just a warehouse for data. The Northern Virginia area has a lot of these uses, Prince William Loudon, Fairfax, and now this type of use is spreading down 95. We have a dark fiber line along the interstate, which makes this area very attractive as the next area to do that. Our zoning ordinance does not have this use in it, so what we've been working on is a definition for the use, adding it to the use table. We've been looking into what type of externalities or impacts come with these type of uses. And so, I'll walk kind of generally through what we're proposing. This is on the city council agenda for initiation, to initiate the public hearing process on Tuesday. So, if you wanted more information, that link is available. You can see the draft ordinance. But basically, what we found is that if it's a use under 10,000 square foot, we would, none of us would ever know it was there. And it's a good, compatible, commercial use, so we want to permit it in any zoning district by right. Over 10,000 square feet, you start to get into the bigger data centers. And some of the, some of this learning curve has already been gone through by Northern Virginia localities, but the major impacts are not noise or traffic or light. There's relatively low numbers of employees, though they do have, come with good jobs, relatively low traffic because it's just mainly servers in the warehouse, and they don't make any noise. What the, the couple of performance standards that we are looking at are that sometimes the buildings that get built are large industrial-looking warehouse buildings. They don't need windows or anything like that. So, we have put a performance standard in for differentiating the facade. They have a lot of mechanical and electrical equipment. Sometimes, on the larger ones, they'll even have, you know, an entire substation. Those things need to be screened, so we've got that listed in here. And then probably the biggest issue is that the largest of these facilities, and they get up to, you know, a complex of 500,000 square feet of use, so a big shopping center. The older ones would use water-based cooling systems for their servers, and it was a major withdrawal from the water system. So, the data center use, the bigger one, would be permitted by right only in general industrial, and in the other commercial and non-residential zoning districts by special use permit. So, this is that larger facility. But we've also added into that water cooling performance standard, if NI2, they do opt to go with water cooling instead of air cooling, which is the more modern technology, then they would require a special use permit for that as well. So, that's kind of where the thinking is now, how the ordinance is drafted. Like I said, it's scheduled for initiation by the city council on Tuesday, and then we'll be coming to you all September 12th for a look at that and a recommendation. So, I'm happy to take any questions you guys have.
Mr. O'Toole?
I know very little about this, but I've seen something on the television that says that they demand an awful lot of electricity. In some places, they've drained the whole doggone system, in some of the smaller towns that they were put in.
Yeah, we don't...
Is that something that we should be aware of in the ordinance?
In terms of electricity? No. Our electric, where we are positioned in terms of the electrical grid, we have sufficient demand. It's the water, really, that was a concern.
That was my next question. We don't have all the water in the world. How does that work?
Right. And so, if they set up their system, Bill and I and Angela Freeman did a tour of a facility in Northern Virginia. It is a nine-acre building. It's nine acres, okay? This is a data, the building, the building itself, yeah. And they, they did, they used more industrial engineers than architects to design this place. They engineered an air cooling system into the building and did not use water. So, that's what, if someone comes in and they do that level of engineering and create a cutting-edge product, that's why we think that that should be by right. It's, that's great. The water cooling, the demand gets up there pretty quick, and it's non-negligible. And like you said, we have 2.5 million gallons a day of permitted withdrawal between Spotsylvania County and us. We have a certain amount of water we can pull a day, and we have capacity for 2.5 million gallons a day. We can do a lot with that 2.5 million gallons. But if we had a major user data center come in and they wanted to use water technology, the peak demand would be something like 500,000, 500,000 gallons per day. So, you can see, we would eat right into our allocation very quickly. That's why we've put this special use permit on there. If they do opt for a water cooling system, we need to check that, make sure that we have capacity, make sure that that's in the city's best interest. Otherwise, if they do an air cooling system, the water demand is, you know, an office of 20 people.
So, the ordinance would be written where is if there's a water usage, as I understand what you're saying, that would require a special use?
Yep, so we can check it, you know, because we don't permit this by right in NI2.
Or if they change from something that they thought was going to work, and now they need water, that they'd have to come back for a special use. I hope that would also be...
Absolutely. And that's a, any building permit for that would go through zoning. We check building permits for this kind of thing all the time, and we would catch it right when the building permit came in and say, hey, special use permit time. Bring it before you all.
What's the incentive of having a data center?
It is a tremendous generator of tax revenue due to B-Pole and real estate taxes and other things like that. They do the 20 or so jobs that the major facilities generate are great jobs. It's highly skilled professionals that are in these places, so there's a lot of revenue-based and jobs benefit.
How do you, you talk about, that's a business license tax you're talking about, right?
Equipment tax, is that what I said? I said B-Pole, but I meant equipment. And Bill, Bill knows the number.
Personal property.
Personal property, okay.
So, it's personal property tax.
Bill, do you want to talk about taxes? I think I'm butchering this. There's a lot of money from taxes. That's what I...
How much is a lot?
Mike's not butchering it. He's doing a good job. But yeah, the big tax revenue generator, generation from a data center is through personal property tax, because they have thousands of computers or tens of thousands of computers in it. It's basically just a big warehouse with a bunch of computers, and so it adds up pretty quickly with, you know, $3.40 per $100 of assessed value, and they've got a couple hundred million dollars' worth of computers. So, there's been many localities actually that have decreased their personal property rate, like Henrico County went down to like 40 cents to attract Facebook, a Facebook data center. And so, that's what most of the tax revenue is from, is personal property tax. Some from real estate, some from B-Pole, the personal property taxes.
Personal property.
They also pay significant prices per acre, so from a developer's standpoint, they're an attractive user.
I was just talking about the city's standpoint. What do we, what does the city get out of it?
We generate some good-paying jobs and a whole bunch of tax revenue. And also, businesses might cluster around the data center if they need access to, I'm making some of this up a little bit, but you know...
Good, good, go ahead.
I like it, I like it. Go ahead.
You know, connectivity to the, to high bandwidth. But mainly, it's the localities like them a lot because of the, because of the tax revenue, the personal property tax revenue and the, and the jobs.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm probably speaking out of school here too, but from what I understand, the technology of servers has also changed from the old way they did it, where basically you have a disk that's constantly spinning inside your machine to solid-state drives that are not generating the heat that the other ones do. So, you have a couple of things going on, but the cooling technology, but also that the servers themselves are not generating as much heat as they used to. Could be wrong, but that's what I believe I read at some point.
I'm not a guy to make that up.
Bill and I went to the same school.
And Mr. O'Toole, I just want you to know, if they come in with air or something other than water, it's very difficult to put in a chiller farm. You need a lot more land. So, they'd know that upfront, what they're going to do when it comes to that.
All right. It's next on our list.
I'd like to add one. Is there any way that we could encourage renewable energy with these types of things, like solar or, I mean, I don't know, geothermal? I'm not an engineer, but I'm wondering if, since we're going down the road of technology, let's, and we're concerned about the drain of electricity, if somehow insinuating that would be advantageous?
We can look at that.
And then the other thing too, just to throw out, wouldn't it be great if the, some of the tax revenue generated by these types of things could go to subsidize some affordable housing in the area?
Yeah, but you can't, you can't take revenue and put it somewhere. You can't do that. It's illegal.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we wouldn't just eat it.
Okay. Any other questions? What's next on our list?
Just to give you an update of where we are in very small area planning processes, taking them in numeric order, not necessarily chronological order, we're focusing on doing the ordinance update to the UDO, addressing the small area plans. That'll probably come to you all in, probably in October, in Small Area 6, the actual comp plan amendments, that will probably be coming to you all in September. And then Small Area Plan 7, the downtown plan, we're in the market study phase of that. The first major public hearing activity will be on September 11th. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and he's going to add to it.
Which one were we talking about, Area 6? Any of them? So, did you mention initiation? Okay, so that's good. Area Plan 3, we'll jump in on that. We are working diligently towards completing the first of our formal form-based code. I don't know if you guys have heard the speech of mine yet, but the city's UDO actually has some good form-based elements already in it, so it's not too much of a leap to go the step further. But we have nearly finalized the related form-based code text amendments for the Area 3 plan, which also involves adjustments to the development standards. Some of the things you talked about tonight, for example, alleywits, reducing those down to 20 feet to get in line with what we know works out in Idewild. We have been, we brought in a guy named Bill McElie, who was the city attorney in Virginia Beach when they implemented some of these codes down there to help us through our final review. We're nearing the end with them, and we anticipate initiating those text amendments second meeting in August. So, we'll keep you updated on that, but that should be coming forward, if not September, then in October. We're very excited about that for Area 3. I think Chuck had mentioned that we've started the Area 7 planning process. We're going to try to do a series of, I don't know what you call it, we're going to try to show up at public events to start the, start making people aware that there is going to be the charrette in October. We've got a place in mind, if it's still available, we're going to hold a five-day charrette in the Planters Museum at the corner of William and Princess Anne Street. And for five days, Streetsense will be on site, and people can just come in. We'll have scheduled time for everyone, for you all to come in and meet, and other things like that, but it will be open for five days. We're hoping to get a lot of public involvement there. So, what we're going to try to do over the next month and a half is go to things like First Friday Events or the farmer's market, or events that they're holding downtown, and have a presence there, and maybe do some of the preliminary charrette stuff. We're not sure what our strategy is yet, but you'll be seeing our public outreach that way. I think we also have a meeting on September 6th, 11th, okay? We have a meeting on September 11th with the Streetsense folks, so they'll be up here for that.
Right. Yes, September 6th with the Streetsense.
Is the public meeting. That's the one I was hoping to mention. So, that's Area 7. And then Area 6, Suzanne has put a lot of work into finalizing that. We've had a lot of good meetings with the Fall Hill Avenue Neighborhood, Makers Meeting, Mr. Rodriguez was at the last one. So, we've been meeting with different groups about Area 6, and that plan is coming together. That is on the city council agenda for initiation on next Tuesday as well. So, that will be coming back to you all September 12th for public hearing and final recommendation on that. So, if you want to get more information, see the final document, that is available on the website. So, happy to take any questions about those items.
Questions?
So, just for the record, could you just explain what a charrette is?
Yeah. How do you explain what charrette is? Basically, it's a community, it's designed by community. The way of thinking now is that the best way to get people's input may not be this here, sitting around the horseshoe, and then people only have a three-minute opportunity and something's flashing in their face, but leave it open, leave the door open, have a place where people can come, and have things on the tabletop that are designed to kind of help people interact in land use, land use scenarios, because it's not natural. It feels natural, but it's not really natural. So, that's basically it. It's a means to, a more productive means to get public input.
Okay. Thank you.
As we get closer to it and have a more detailed sense of the schedule of those five days, we will share that with you all to encourage you all to drop in as best fits with your schedule. I would like you to pencil in a sort of a work session time at 6:30 before your October 12th meeting to, for us to meet down there and get an assessment of where things are and how things are transpiring and evolving. So, we do look forward to everyone's involvement in that.
Yeah, I for one really think the planning commission on this round needs to be very active in this process and listen to the community and be involved in these charrettes. You know, I think last, the last round, I wasn't here for the last round, but I think there was some concern after the fact that maybe the planning commission was not as involved or wasn't presented to, and I think there's no better way for us to be involved than to actually be participating in these meetings. So, if you can make the time, I think it's important that we do that. Okay? Any other business tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you all.
From Paris?